All right, ladies and gentlemen, please stand and join Councilwoman Fajit in the pledge and then the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me, please? Our Father, we take this time of the year to come to you and to be thankful for what we have and for our nation that we have and for all of the development that has happened over the years and the blessings that you've been involved in, which is all of them, and that we have a great nation because of your presence and because of your blessing. And we come to you tonight just thanking you for that most of all. We just thank you for this group of men and women. We just ask that you bless them tonight in their decision-making, that you'd grant them wisdom. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Don. Open up our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of November 21st. Our second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, or recognitions. Jesse, do we have anything? We have none. I will move then to our consent agenda, item number three. We have two things on the consent agenda: approval of our Public Works Authority meeting of November 7th and approval of a fiscal year 17, year-end budget amendment 15, which moves money to varying accounts to finish out the fiscal year. I'll entertain a motion in a second for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion at all? Submit your votes, please.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of consent agendas, items A and B from all those present. Item number four, discussion and possible action concerning the purchase order of a Freightliner truck chassis and also the under that's which is under state contract and also a sewer cleaner that would be affixed to this chassis. Staff comments?
Very quickly, and then Tenny can answer any technical questions. You're doing three things in this item. You're buying a chassis and then you're buying the actual vacuum unit that goes on there, the Vector sewer cleaner, and they will put it on the chassis and that'll be part of their cost with some options both under state contract and the low bidder on fine incident for lease purchasing was City National Bank at an interest rate of 2.05% for a five-year term.
Okay. Is, I know that the, that the truck itself was 17 years old. Was the truck and the existing vac cleaner both 17 years old?
Yes, both was 17 years old. That current truck is currently, as we speak, in the shop in the city, having transmission repairs made. We're relying currently now on a 37-year-old truck to keep all of our lines clean.
Some mileage and hours does this thing have on it?
Probably more hours.
If you know that.
Their current truck has 4,359 hours.
Okay.
And that's a big one.
That's a big number.
That's the big one.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Now, will we keep that or are you going to get rid of it?
We will, we will. Our plans is to keep that one as our backup and be surplusing the older unit, the 37-year-old unit.
I just wanted, I'm just asking about that. It's great.
Because I was just kind of surprised to see this come up just out of the blue that we have to come up with something like this.
Yeah, it's, we have asked for this for several years throughout the budget process. We finally kind of came to put together a plan of using part of the CMOM funds, taking $80,000 out of the CMOM fund for a five-year span here to just purchase one that direction.
Obviously, a critical piece of equipment, especially if we have any, any kinds of blockages in our, in our systems. So obviously, we want to have something that works. Just didn't quite understand if they were both seventeen, you know, both older, if you could just replace the truck and put the back onto the new, onto a new chassis or, but they're both pretty much about the same vintage and need, both need, both things need to be replaced.
Yes, both of them is the same age. Both of them was purchased at the same time, truck and, and the unit. And then that is also kind of, it limits us on our purchases as far as cabin chassis for what the unit fits on as well. I mean, we're real limited on what we can purchase, what the unit fits on. We've checked with local vendors as well and we're just, we're real limited on, on what that unit fits on.
Okay.
Might point out, unless I'm wrong, this unit does more than just backups. It also is used in regular maintenance of the sewer lines as well.
Yes, it's used in our regular maintenance, everyday operation. This truck rolls out every day. It'll vacuum, clean out manholes. It, of course, jets the lines and this new, new unit will also have as one of the options a camera on the actual head as we clean the line with the jetter nozzle. And then when we bring the nozzle back, the hose back, it will as well give us a video of that line.
Good, good. That's great. Any, any other questions from the council?
Well, I'm guessing this fits in with the CMOM and it's not going to affect us that bad. I mean, it's a pretty good chunk of change.
What we plan to do, and we developed this as we went through the budget process this year, to adopt a budget for this year, is to take $80,000 for the next five years out of the CMOM funds that are generated. That will reduce the amount of money we have for improvements to the actual lines themselves. To make up for some of that, we're looking at applying for some CDBG grants and using our remaining funds as matching money. So, and if we're successful in getting those grants, then we probably won't actually decrease the amount of lines we're doing each year.
Okay.
I've got, I've got one more question. When you were looking at buying this, the reasons that you were looking at it, because of maintenance or because of the age of the equipment we have? What were you, did you come across a really good deal? What?
No, there's, there's several reasons. The current truck, the, the new, the 17-year-old truck, our newest one, the, of course, the material that we, that that truck works in every day is highly acety material. We've had to rebuild the tank twice now, go in and reline it, patching it. We've had to go in and patch the actual suction tube on it. We've replaced the pump once on this truck. Of course, now the truck itself, that, that was all repairs to the unit. The truck itself, of course, we're having the transmission done now. We're just, for an every, everyday use, the truck itself is starting to let down on us.
So what kind of, if you were to just kind of throw all those figures in your head real quick, how, how much do you think it's cost us to maintain that, replace the liner, replace the transmission, all that kind of stuff we're doing? People need to understand, that's the only reason I'm asking.
We're looking at getting it out of the shop in Oklahoma City, hopefully by the end of this week and that, for the transmission, driveline, there was some, some wear where the seal, where the driveline goes into the transmission as well, having that redone. Just over $4,000 in repairs. We did the tank rebuild in-house, went in and relined it ourselves, took some plate steel and welded it all up, rebuilt it ourselves. We rebuilt the suction tube ourselves, went down, had some pipe purchased and welded it back in place. The pump, we took it off several years ago and took it down, had it rebuilt. It's, the tolerances inside them pumps is way beyond our, our capability and we had to take it off. And I don't recall what that expense was, but it was several, several thousand.
Okay. And almost on a recurring basis, it sounds like, so?
Yes.
It's becoming unreliable and it's something you need almost on a daily basis.
This, this unit is something that will keep us out from under consent orders through DEQ.
Cool. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the funding for the purchase of both the chassis and the cleaner, as well as the financing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move with the purchase of the chassis and the cleaner, as well as the funding that was rec, that was identified in at number four item. With that, we are adjourned from the Public Works Authority meeting and I call order our City Council of November 21st. Consent agenda A through C. A is approval of our minutes of November 7th. B is the confirmation of the GPWA action to approve the FY '17 end-of-year budget amendment number 15, which we just previously talked about, basically balancing the funds at the end of the fiscal year. And C is the approval of assignment of hangar lease number 32, Latham Investment Properties and financing for improvement. I'll entertain a motion in a-
So moved.
Second.
In a second. Is there any discussion of these three items on the consent agenda?
Leroy, is that that new hangar that's on the south end of the airport there?
Yeah, this, I'm not sure exactly where it is, but it is already constructed and this is just their permanent financing.
I thought, I think it's the one, it looks nice. I was after looking at it, it looks really nice.
Yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
We're done that.
We did that. Oh, okay. Well then, submit your votes.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of the consent agenda items number A, B, and C. Item number three, discussion and possible action concerning adoption of resolution number 2017-26, bridge inspections for the 14 bridges that fall under the City of Guthrie responsibility. Staff comments?
ODOT gives you a variety of ways to determine who does your bridge inspections. We have 13 bridges that we have to inspect. Depending on what we do with Harrison, it may be 12. We chose to do interviews and select our own and Tenny put that process together. I would point out that the bridge inspections are paid 100% federal funds, so this is not costing us out of our local budget, but we are required to do these inspections of our bridges.
Just point of clarification, so are there 14 or are there 13?
There are 13 and counting the Harrison Bridge that, that no longer is functional. If you take it out, then you're down to 12, not up to 14.
Because our agenda identifies 14.
I thought I read 13 somewhere. Tenny, is it 13 or 14?
It should be 13.
13.
So it should be 13.
And if we take out the Harrison Bridge-
Then it'd be 12.
I thought we were missing the bridge.
Heard that.
It just got up and walked.
Okay, so we have-
These are all bridges that are all still in use, is that correct?
So we can just get up and leave.
Leroy?
Yes, except for the one by the stadium.
Okay.
Sorry about that, there was a typo on the, I was looking at the report, not the agenda.
Okay, all right, good. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any other discussion? And this is to approve the amendment of the 13 bridges. Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to go ahead with the inspection resolution number 2017-26, bridge inspection of 13 bridges within the City of Guthrie responsibility. Item number four, discussion, possible action to deny tort claim number 204161-ME, as recommended by our, our municipal assurance group, O-MAG. Staff comments?
Mr. Auger is not here tonight. I would just report that this is standard procedure. Whenever we have a backup, we, the individuals submit a claim, they provide whatever information they can. Staff provides information to O-MAG and our, as our insurance carrier. They make a recommendation as to whether the claim should be approved or denied. In this case, they have recommended that we were not liable and that the claim should be denied.
So legally, we don't have any responsibility, is what they're saying. It's not that we don't feel sorry for these people and wish that it hadn't happened.
Correct. And, and liability for the city is defined by statutes and case law and so it's not the same definition as some people might think it is, but under our operating definition, O-MAG has found us not to be liable.
And it's because we didn't know about it, so there wasn't any way for us to, to prevent it from happening?
Correct. That, that, that is a summary of it, yes.
Yep. Okay, any other, any other questions, staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval to deny the tort claim 204161-ME. Item number five, discussion, possible action to approve Tourism CVB Event Support Policy Statement. Staff?
Andrea is going to present that one.
Can you get it up here? Okay, so right now, the CVB, the Convention and Visitor Board reviews applications made by groups or people who are producing events in town and we often award them funds as funds are available through a portion of our budget to help produce those events. This was started back in 2015 and we have limited funds available each year and what we've noticed is there's both an increase in the number of requests and the amount of money requested. And so we're wanting to make this something that's sustainable and there was no policy or anything governing this and so that's what, I did some research of what other communities do, I talked with my board, got several examples, and put together what's before you tonight. So we already had a form in place for an application for these funds. There are some red markings in here on the changes to what we've, we've done. I would say the main changes are that we're setting quarterly deadlines for applications that coincide with when we get hotel motel tax. So we kind of have an idea at that point what we have to give out in that fund, if we have the funds to award. And it also, I don't know if you've been to our meetings, Mayor, I know you have, Cheryl, I know you have, they tend to run, Jeff, I know you have, they tend to run very long. So we're hoping we can consolidate the event support requests quarterly, help our meetings go a little smoother. Also, we're setting a cap on the amount that could be requested by one organization annually at $5,000. I think this year's budget for event support is around $18,000, so a $5,000 request would be a full quarter of our budget, a little over that. This would not include money if we wanted to purchase advertising at an event or if we wanted to purchase a sponsorship or promotional package produced by the event through our marketing dollars. The, the, here, there's a, I think that's our, those are our main, main changes. One of the other changes, we talked about awarding 50% of funding upfront to an event and 50% after we've received their post-event report, so there's some accountability about the money that's spent. That's also pretty standard across other communities that use this kind of program. I made a metric, too. A lot of times, board members were wondering how we should score applications, how we should stack up one to the other and how to be fair. So I drafted something through some examples I got from other communities. And then a lot of our events have asked me, well, do you have a form for the post-event report? That would make it a lot simpler than just a list of what you need, because often they turn in the list of what is needed after with their application, because it's just listed in the application. So I created that to try to help folks who are making these applications get us information that we want to evaluate the effectiveness of the program or their event. Do you have any-
Basically, you're just laying down some ground rules-
Exactly.
And making this formal.
Mm-hmm. Do you have any questions?
One question, Andrea. The, on your scoring sheet, the 10th item, you talk about different scores if they meet the deadline or not. But in all of the, all of the, the information before that, you talk about if they don't meet the deadline, you don't even consider it. I mean, why have a deadline if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna hold, hold people to it?
You have a good point.
Am I missing that? I, I just didn't know why we needed the 10th item. It just seems to me that if they didn't get it in on time, they're not even in the mix. They're not even scoreable.
I think I had a request to add that. I think I can probably adjust the score sheet a little bit. I'm trying to think of where I could amend that so that we have that five points, so that we have 100 points possible.
You have to spread those five points to other, other places? If you agree with that assessment-
Yeah, that's-
I don't know. We, you have the chairman of the CVB over here.
I think, I know one of our, one of our things is we had, I think we had discussed the difference between do we have applications due 90 days prior to the event, when I first drafted this score sheet versus quarterly. So I didn't go, that was a-
I see.
That was a fault on mine to not go back and make sure that they, they weren't-
Well, as Director of Tourism, you've got a lot on your plate.
We also have groups that do supplemental stuff like-
You might need to get up there, Mike, and identify yourself and your position and then we'll go.
Mike Monahan, Chairman of CVB. We also have people that turn in stuff like after the agenda comes out, that they want supplemental stuff on the application. So we're just, we're just trying to cover all the bases so that if we turn them down, they said, but I turned everything in. So we're just trying to make sure that they get everything turned in and that we're sort of scoring them on turning everything in. Because they don't.
So you think that that item 10 is all right?
On the way-
On the score sheet?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. The way it's written, yes, Mayor.
Okay, right. Okay, good. Any other questions of either individual here? No? Well, I will entertain a motion then to approve this.
So moved.
In a second. Any other discussion? Submit your vote.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to move ahead with the event support policy statements as identified in item number five. Item number six, city manager report. Leroy?
And I do have one tonight. Hope you're all ready for it.
Okay, we're ready.
First item, Aaron Rybrin, GTV, GTV 20 Media Tech produced a video for the film industry recruiting spot to encourage the film industry to choose Guthrie as a filming location. This promo was presented at the, an Oklahoma Film and Music Office Conference. The spot's been viewed over 2,000 times on the city's Facebook page and had over 50 shares. So I'll pause now so Aaron can show the video.
There was, there was a video that was running.
I think he did while you were talking. There we go again.
Okay. You have to get closer to the mic, we couldn't hear you too much in chambers here, but, but it was an outstanding video and presents the community extremely well.
On a side note, as indicated in that spot, Christmas with, in the Heartland featuring Bo Derek, Shelley Long, Joe Don, Rooney, and others filmed in Guthrie earlier this year, has been released. Watched it the other night and it was great to watch a movie with so many Guthrie scenes in it. So if you haven't seen that, you might want to either rent or buy that movie.
Good.
On October 13th, we had a Fall City Employee Appreciation Activity.
Here's the mayor.
Movie in the Park. We showed Goosebumps and we had a cookout at Mariner Wells Park in appreciation of the hard work that our employees do. 2017 City of Guthrie Employee United Way campaign results. Our employees not only work hard, but they give back to the community. This year, employees pledged to donate $12,751.80 to United Way. This is a city employee record. City staff had a total of 27 fair share contributors. A fair share contributor is any person that contributes at least one hours pay per month for the full year. Going on to Fire Department. The Fire Department hosted a Storytime event in conjunction with the library in which firefighters read books to the children and then showed them the fire trucks. Fire Department spent much of October presenting fire prevention programs to preschool and elementary children in Guthrie. FD recently had a third-party pump testing done on the department's engines. The 1991 and the 2001 engines passed with flying collars pumping very well for 16 and 26-year-old units. Fire Department employees were released, recently recognized by Sooner Post 5578 of the VFW for their service to the community. Captain Ryan Adams was presented a certificate of appreciation. Lieutenant Ryan Reeves was honored as firefighter of the year. Firefighter Blake Braden was recognized as EMS responder of the year. Fire Department personnel participate in the annual downtown Halloween trick-or-treat And then recently, Fire Department personnel were spotted by a local resident stopping on their way back from a call to fix an American flag that was knotted up and not flying properly. The following pictures were posted on social media. Next on the airport, in the November/December issue of Aviation for Women featured on our very own Airport Director, Shalon Stanley, the picture of Shalon was taken by our own Aaron Rybrin. Shalon stated in an article, "I am so blessed by the beauty that surrounds this general aviation airport of 129-based aircraft as I stand out on the end of the runway, I'm in all of the city of Guthrie nestled below the airport. You can see for miles the sun shining, the blue skies, and the big white puffy clouds and the tree-filled green rolling hills. However, the real beauty of it is being a part of this unique partnership between the cities of Guthrie and Edmund and seeing the positive attitudes of surrounding communities who continue to work together to make this airport great. I like to think our airport is-" I like to think our airport is the front door to our community, gateway to the world." And that was one of her quotes in the article. The public library was at the airport for storytime. To celebrate Aviation Month and the rich history of airplanes, storytime was held at the Guthrie Edmond Airport. On November 15th, children and their families received a tour of the airport, learned about airplanes, airports, and sang songs based in aviation. The library, we've added a database called Reference USA. The library recently acquired Reference USA. It's an interface that allows cardholders to find jobs by job skills, location, industry, find business opportunities, locate companies, view historic old market trends, track down addresses and phone numbers, discover news articles for research, and this interface is available 24 hours per day, seven days a week. The library had a water coloring class. On November 18th, attendees learned how to apply color and compose a painting through a step-by-step demonstration. The instructor illustrated some basic water coloring techniques. Students completed a painting suitable for framing. Public Works. Sewer treatment plant superintendent, Richard Romine, retired after 31 years of quality service to the city. Throughout his service, Richard was a valuable resource to the city of Guthrie. In Mineral Wells Park, combination of parks, line maintenance, and street department employees recently refurbished the gazebo in Mineral Wells Park. The gazebo is a very historic element of our park. It sits on the far west end of the park, and is constructed around one of the many wells that are located throughout the park. Public Works replaced a cap on the stone entry wall of the Highland Park. This entry wall was built prior to 1908. It is an iconic part of Guthrie, and we're pleased to be working with the Highland Park Neighborhood Association to preserve it. Sewer line replacement, earlier this year, you all approved two projects. The contract was just over $61,500. Those two sewer line replacement projects have been completed. Approximately 650 feet of pipe and four manholes have been replaced. Area 1 was between East Perkins Avenue and Grant Avenue from South Birch to South Locust Street. Area 2 was between West College and West Washington from 13th to 14th Street. City recently approved Fifth Street Drainage Project. That contract was just over $117,700. This project is located at Fifth and Oklahoma, and it's in its final completion stages. This drainage project replaces approximately 800 feet of underground pipe, three manholes, and through four curb inlets. It replaces an existing drainage basis that had totally collapsed in numerous locations back in January of this year. On October 26th, we had a holistic economic development luncheon. Speaker was Ricky Hayes of Retail Attraction, our retail consultant. He covered the concept that economic development efforts must focus on more than highways, rail spurs, water lines, and service systems and the like. Healthcare, education, arts, recreation, and economic opportunity are among the myriad of factors that influence a community's quality of life and future growth potential. Economic development is commonly regarded as creating jobs in a community through recruiting firms and the facilitation of business startups. A more holistic definition of economic development would include raising the standard of living and quality of life for all residents through higher-skill jobs and diversifying the local economy in a sustainable manner. The International Counseling of Shopping Centers, short I C S C, is a global trade association of the shopping center industry. It has more than 70,000 members in over 100 countries, including shopping center owners, developers, managers, investors, retailers, brokers, and public officials. Rebecca Blain, city planner, myself, attended the I C S C Texas Conference and Deal-Making Trade Show to promote Guthrie to potential restaurants and retailers. We were assisted by Ricky Hayes of Retail Attractions, our retail consultant. This event is held annually. It's a great opportunity for owners, developers, retailers, brokers, lenders, municipalities, to gather under one roof to exhibit and make deals and form successful business partnerships. This particular conference usually has up to 8,000 attendees and over 250 exhibitors. I believe that we established a foundation at this conference for our community going forward. We made several connections with developers and retailers that have an interest in the Guthrie trade area. Some of these interests are more immediate, and some are more longer-term in nature. I would throw out, dealing with the myriad of landowners, brokers, developers, individual retailers, lenders, the whole mix of people you have to deal with to put a retail development project together, to me, is similar or like trying to put a litter of kittens in a basket. When you chase down two kittens, by the time you get back to the basket, three more run off. And that's a good way to describe retail recruitment and development. Back in the 2018 budget, our sales tax year-to-date, I would, a little history. I started the first week of February. My first day on the job in Guthrie, I was told that since we had three payrolls to pay in March, that the city may not have the funds to pay those payrolls unless we amended the stabilization fund ordinance and borrow from the city's rainy day fund. In the mid-year budget review, we found that if we didn't take any corrective actions, that the balance of our three operating counts would be significantly low, and we had to make some hard choices to adjust our budget mid-year. And we made significant strides since then, but we still have to be guarded on how we budget and expend our public funds. But if you look at that chart, and it may be too small to see, but for the first two months of this budget year, October, November, in November, our sales tax was up 15% for the first two months. It averaged 12%. That's $90,000 more in the general fund for the first two months of this year as compared to the first two months of the budget year. Remember, our budget starts on October 1. So, if you analyze that, and we were able to sustain that growth, you're talking about roughly $600,000 more in sales tax this budget year than last budget year. And when you look at the capital improvement fund, same result. If you annualize the $24,000 additional we got for the first two months, it would be approximately $150,000 more for the capital improvement fund this year over last year. I wanted to highlight a few upcoming community events. One, the Kwanah Christmas Auction on Saturday, December 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00. The auction will be live on G T V 20, or Cox Cable, Channel 20, starting at 10:00 a.m., and streamed live on Guthrie News Page. It's held here on the second floor of City Hall in the council chamber meeting room. All proceeds benefit Guthrie children. The next one, the Territorial Christmas 2017, Celebrate Christmas Guthrie Style. Opening night is on November 25th, coming up this Saturday at 6:00 p.m. Lighted Parade on Oklahoma Avenue, inauguration of the territorial governor, lighting of the territorial Christmas tree at the Guthrie Post Office, and free Christmas movies after the ceremonies. On December 9th, Historic Home Tour from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then, Victorian Walk evenings on December 9th and 16th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00. Live scenes in the downtown shop windows, dressed up to reflect a Christmas and the early days of the Oklahoma Territory. And then, the last one I would highlight, the Polat Theaters located in downtown historic Guthrie. Territorial Christmas Carol, an Oklahoma tradition, showing from November 24th to December 23rd. This was adapted for the Polat Theaters in 1987 by gifted Oklahoma playwright Stephen P. Scott. This version of the Chris Charles Dickens classic Tale of Redemption and brotherly love is set in Guthrie during the first Christmas after the Oklahoma land run. We have, in my opinion, a lot of things to be thankful for, for this Thanksgiving holiday. I know we still have a lot of work to do, and improvements we need to make, but I think we're making great strides, and hopefully, we can look forward to a good holiday season.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Any questions of the council of city manager? Number seven, item on our agenda is comments by members of the city council. Councilman Case, let's start there.
Recent events here in town had some issues with some theft, and I just really, really want to commend the Guthrie Police Department. The CID was amazing. They really did a good job. They were on the ball. They, they really did a good job. And I want to commend all the city people. I mean, we, we've got great staff. You know, we've got people that, that really are dedicated to what they do, and most towns can't say that.
Very good. Councilman Padgett?
Well, I, Leroy, I want to thank you. I think that I really like what I'm seeing. I like what you've done, and I'm proud of the staff that we have. I think Guthrie's made improvements leaps and bounds, and thank you all very much.
Councilman Taylor?
I'd just echo that as well, and I think things are moving along at a great pace. And I know, I was just telling Tinny, I appreciate him working out there on the dam, getting those things done, and I know several other things is going on. So, staff, I appreciate you all very much, all of you.
Councilman Wood?
Yes, again, staff does amazing job, all you out there taking care of things with limited funds, limited resources to keep everything going. We're coming into an exciting time of year with all the festivities and all that. I think it's going to be an exciting time. Everybody's, the city's getting all dressed up. I noticed the wreaths have been put up, and everything that's going on at the airport and at the library and everything, and Tinny's doing a hard job and putting everything in together. I hope everybody has a joyous and happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody's safe, and enjoy the weekend, and it should be a good season.
It is a good season. You know, you mentioned a number of things there that staff are doing, that the city is doing, Leroy, and one of the things that really jumps off the page to me is the setting of a, of a new record in the giving to United Way. I think that reflects, I think it reflects the compassion of, of the city employees. I think it also reflects the leadership, because they do follow your lead, and your leadership has been, has been fantastic, not only yours, but all the department heads. So, to, to set a new, a new record in the giving to, to the city through the United Way, I think is a, is a really, really good omen of, of, of our staff. We've got some opportunities still on some of our boards. The forestry board is still, has one vacancy, so if you're interested in serving in that capacity, and continuing to assist our city as a tree city, and be involved with some of the plantings that we have, and some of the other tree opportunities to plant trees, if you will, or give trees away throughout our community, you might want to consider being a member of that, of that board. Also, a new committee that we have recently established, and are looking for individuals that are interested in our ADA Advisory Committee, our American with Disabilities Act Advisory Committee. If you are interested in assisting the city in identifying areas where we can improve our, our capacities for individuals with disabilities, and, and assist in making goals and objectives and plans for our future, please consider being on that, on that committee. Go to the city website, the forms are there, and fill it out, be a part, active part of this great community.
Mr. Mayor-
Yes?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the ADA committee, how many people, how many positions have you filled?
Well, we haven't filled any yet. The, the intent is to have at least seven, one nomination from each member of the council. And we have, at present time, that I'm aware of, we have one applicant, one individual that has identified interest. Now, I may have missed some, but that's all I'm aware of.
We don't have a large enough pool yet for you all to select from for your nominations, so we still need to actively recruit people that are interested, and then we'll notify you all so that you can pull from that pool for your nominations.
So, in the viewing audience out there, it, it's a unique opportunity to assist the city in meeting the needs of individuals with disabilities, young and adults. We've made some significant inroads in some planning for the new, the new park at Banner School site, for that playground to, to have playground equipment that is adaptable for children with disabilities. So, not, not only adults, but children, this, this advisory committee will be involved with. So, be a part of it. It's a unique opportunity. And also, we've got Thanksgiving, General Daniel's Dinner at the American Legion on Thursday, for anybody that wants to attend. And I know it's a great meal, and they're, they're, they're looking for volunteers, too. So, if you're, if you're looking for a volunteer activity before you go off with your family to a, a, a location, or go to, go home, they're looking for some volunteers to help from, I think it's 11:30 to 1:00, at the American Legion, Thursday, General Daniel's Annual Thanksgiving Dinner here. It's a, it's a big treat. Anybody else? Last words? Ladies and gentlemen-